Everyone here tonight, if there's any members of the public or the emergency board, they will make sure they fill out a public comment so that we can acknowledge them. Our first item of business, we have a lot of things we're going to be discussing tonight. And we want to move as quickly as we can, however, we want to make sure we discuss these items very carefully and thoroughly so that all the board members understand them. Also, so that we can make sure that the staff has clear direction from the board as far as what they should do. First item of business will be public comment, I mean, staff report. Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of it is, of the staff reports in the packet. The only thing that has come up, and you may have already received a call, if you haven't received a call, you'll see it on Facebook. We have a water leak on the line that runs on the south side of, or on the, it runs south along Commercial, roughly where the entrance to the old Scotts tractor, now it's Coleman Equipment Company is, roughly in that vicinity, we have a water leak right there with a valve that is about a foot and a half away from two big power poles. One of those guy wire hold downs that we believe goes under our water line in there. We also know that there are some 90-degree turns where it crossed the road and then heads south. The area that we're having the problem is right by the valve, so we don't believe shutting that valve will give us any resolution to our problem. The bigger problem for us is the valves that will isolate that area are just north of the Angus Center and just south of Emerald Ridge. So, that entire section is what we have to shut down so that we can attempt to fix the line underneath the ground. What we don't know is what kind of a pipe it is, because it's too old and we don't have any, what we call, leak records. Anytime we have a leak, our guys would write it down in the areas, we don't have maps or plans, so we know what kind of pipe it is, how big it is, et cetera. Never had a problem here before. Biggest fear is that it's cast iron. We don't, we just don't know what's underground. We've looked at, the first option that we tried to propose to see if it would work, well, two options, two things. Number one, being underneath these two big power poles, we're going to need more equipment than we have, so we've made contact with our emergency contractor, Decker, that we have do a lot of our deep and dangerous stuff associated with the two power poles. So, they're involved in it. One of our bigger problems is, we wanted to see if we could do it overnight. Start in, you know, 10 o'clock at night, bring in the lights, do it at night, so that it would disrupt the residences and businesses the least. Problem is, from our contractor who's going to assist us on this point of view, which makes sense, is if you can't tell me what kind of pipes under there, I'm not going to be able to buy every piece of pipe and part and fixing stuff, you know, whether it's a Band-Aid, or I'm going to get some, you know, 90s or whatever. Every size of pipe and every type of pipe is different, so without knowing, doing it overnight, we'll be able to find the problem and then wait until the next morning to actually fix it when a supplier opens up. If you don't have them in stock, or we don't. The other aspect of it is, they had indicated that there is what are called kickers on any 90. You pour concrete around them to hold them so they don't blow apart. If we have to take out a kicker, then we're going to have to pour another one and get it covered with soil as soon as possible so that that concrete doesn't freeze. You want concrete to cure, not freeze. If it freezes, it doesn't have the strength that it needs. And you can't get concrete overnight, so we have to do it sometime during the daytime. From our perspective, it's an emergency. From the contractor's perspective, the first day they can mobilize is Wednesday. That will, this will necessitate shutting the water off for, from Angus, south to that area. It's a large swath, all of Stonebridge, all of Emerald Ridge, all of the senior housing area there, all those, and some of them over on Heritage Tractor, for example, they would lose water. All of those folks were notified today of that problem. We're not confident of doing anything other than during the daytime because of that. Biggest thing is getting the parts and the concrete. So, we've moved that way. It obviously impacts this one business pretty substantially from their perspective. They, you know, they'll have to figure out something alternative for their 100-plus kids. The school across the street with the kids, the Lutheran School, they said they could make it work. I'm not certain how their differences, I don't want to really get into that, I don't, it doesn't, if they can make it work, they can make it work. If the other one can't, they can't. We just have to figure out, if the board thinks we ought to do something different, this would be a good time to make that recommendation that we do something different. Our biggest concern is, given where this leak is, that if it blows the line, it's a boil order for everything from that point south, because it's the only feeder.
Or to do something different?
Potentially wait until maybe Saturday and see if we can get stuff in there. We just know we can't pothole and find out what it is, because if we pothole, we may cause enough stress to cause the rupture, and then we're scrambling trying to find it. So, we need to have everybody mobilized with somebody at the parts store when we dig it up. It would potentially be doing it on a Saturday. We thought about the following Monday, but the leak is apparently getting bigger. So, that's, that's the concern, is if we delay it, then there is no planning, the water pipe ruptures, we lose the tower on the south, the entire south of 92 goes on a boil order. That's the risk. We just, from a staff perspective, thought the risk of getting a boil order for everything south of 92 was a little too great. Understand the negative impact on, on this business, but...
Well, so the cost, if we get a full-blown hemorrhage?
Well, the leak's getting bigger.
Yeah.
Right.
Because it just sounds like an emergency.
Right, and the fact that it's under those two giant poles has got us really, that's our, you know, if we had a better option, we would have chosen it. But I wanted you to be aware, because it obviously is very impactful on those families that have daycare at that location. I just don't know what else we can do, because if it does rupture, it may very well be two or three days before we get everything fixed, depending on how big of an issue it is. And then we're on a boil order cycle, too.
Well, we can either give them notice that they can, they have to deal with it on this date, or we can give them notice that it's happened and they've got to deal with it within the next hour, right?
Right, that, that was...
And then they have to wait for the next week, or something like that.
Yeah.
It's the best bad option we have, so let's go with it.
That's the way we looked at it. If, if anybody has a different opinion, please let us know. We'll, I just, that was the only viable option for us, making the entire south side of the city on a boil order. I was here the last time we had the boil order, I don't want to go through it again.
Is there any way to dig further up the lines?
Potentially, but I will tell, yes, we have discussed that as well, digging potentially, you know, 50, 100 feet up. We can't dig south, because it's under concrete, all the way under MoDOT, but if we dig north, we can get it. However, if they have a pipe change at the next valve, which could happen, then we're, we'll have planned for it and it not be right. So, ultimately, that would make our concern with the overnight stuff. If we could, if we knew definitively, and we had plans, or somebody here had saw it going in, we would feel more comfortable to move forward with that plan. We'd get it all there.
Can you have the parts that you think that you can do, and if you don't use them, what do you do with them?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, that's the deal. The problem is, we don't know, we don't know if it's cast, ductile iron, if it's PVC.
What you said, if you had, and maybe get an estimate, and, you know, hopefully it works, and it doesn't, etc.
It's kind of like a time bomb.
Yeah, that's the problem, that's the other problem for me with the water leak. To the extent that it's gotten Bob Lindley concerned enough, that he's like, we've got to call it an emergency, this thing's got to happen before we have a big problem. Last thing he wants is a boil order. And that's the risk we're up against, is the boil order.
Water leaks never fix themselves, they just get worse exponentially.
You mentioned Heritage, so that would affect Kindred's as well?
Uh, no, I believe Kindred is off of a, uh...
Okay, because I...
Well, I'm not certain where Kindred's, here's what I can tell you.
Because you've mentioned Heritage.
Heritage has a line that goes all the way back, and they connect to Commercial for some reason. I, I don't know why, and I think they're the only one. We got a large list of all the folks that needed to be notified. Some of it were personally handled by Mr. Lindley, some of it's going to be handled by staff here through the Next Door program. This is what's going on, we're likely going to be doing door hangers. I didn't want door hangers going out today, in case there was a concern from the board that, let's do something completely different, then I didn't want everybody to freak out and then come back down to, okay, here we are, we need to make sure we're on one page. But, door hangers in the affected subdivisions.
So, I guess the other thing to consider, once they get in there Wednesday and find out what they have, is for sure letting the daycare know as soon as possible if it's going to take more than 24 hours to fix it.
Right, right. Well, we have to have it done that day.
Okay.
And we will be able to get it done that day. We've notified everyone nine to five.
Okay.
If it's not a horrible situation, and it's in a clean piece of pipe that we can Band-Aid, it's a two-out deal.
Do you Band-Aid?
Well, yeah, in this scenario, that's how we fix all water leaks.
It's a patch.
It's a patch. Yeah, it's called a Band-Aid, that was the, yeah.
I think that the Band-Aid is a temporary fix.
Yeah, no, these are anywhere from 16-inch to four feet long stainless steel wraps with rubber inside of them. You put it on while the water's blowing all over you, and then they seal it back up, turn the water pressure back on, and if it, if it doesn't leak, then they're good.
Due to the age of our infrastructure, these happen on a regular basis.
And this is the, right now, this is the first leak in this vicinity on that line, so that's a good thing, but it's also, you know...
Do we know when it went in?
We don't have plans for it. We don't have any...
Most of those plans were taken away with 654.
Well, I, we don't know for sure.
That's a relatively new line, that's no more than 40 years old.
Yeah, from our standpoint, yeah, it's probably 40. Whenever the development started happening south of 92 is when that occurred, but...
Is this an indication that because of that happening now on that line, and the age of that line, that there may be some more coming, or?
Yeah, well, once they start, they don't stop, so that will be a line, especially given where it's located, that we're going to eventually need to completely bypass. We have one similarly located on 169, but we can't hook it up using this one, because then we'll get in what's called a loop in the water, and we'll never get all the way down to the tower on the south end that feeds Forest Oaks, it'd just go in a big loop. So, we've got to get this designed a fix, to fix this line and move around it. Hopefully, if the property on the southeast corner of that ever develops, when they come in, we can bring in a, an alternative line through that direction and bypass this area completely.
That'll never develop.
Not for a while, anyway.
Not, not as long as the owners own that house.
Yeah, so, in any event, we've got to figure out where we're at. Here's what I can tell you, when we did the Main Street water line four years ago, we estimated there were 150 patches on it, fixes.
Any question, any other questions for Jack?
Yeah, that's, and that's the limit of the staff report, is this water issue such a big one.
From a board perspective, many of you may be getting comments or questions, but particularly for probably our Board One.
Yeah.
And so, but we wanted to let the board know that the staff has carefully considered the options. We've decided that Wednesday is going to be our best bet during the day to minimize potentially further damage and rupture and increase costs. So, it's just something that happens occasionally, as if Jack doesn't have enough to do right now. But, all right, it is what it is. Let's move on to your next item of report.
Yeah, nothing else from staff report, that's the only item other than what's in the packet. I just wanted you all to be aware of that issue, and if there was any conversation or direction to go in a different direction, we would certainly do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Next item of business, public comment. I have one card, Amanda Mains, and I'd like to come up and state your name and address and address the board.
Hi, Amanda Mains, address is 800 Northeast 194th Harris, Smithville, Missouri. I was just wanting to comment on the water billing cycle and the Parks Department review. I think the water billing cycle should be extended to allow a minimum of 20 days from the print date to the due date. And then, I've emailed all of you with my comments on the Parks Department review that I gathered from several friends and people that I met through soccer. On a side note, Jack, on the Swap 'n Shop, they are asking, how much of Commercial will be without water?
And we will get to that here in a bit, we're going to be putting a post out.
Okay.
From, it, just so you are clear, the Angus Hall of Fame, south to the Covert immediately south of Emerald Ridge, that's the area...
Angus to Emerald Ridge?
Angus to Emerald Ridge, and all of those off of that line.
Sorry, I was like live tweeting what you were saying, I didn't catch it all.
It, I did, I did make contact with Wayne Kruger from the school district on that matter, because he was concerned, does this impact us? The valves just, so they're good.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
All right, I had one before.
Obviously, there's been some issues with social media and our policy, and the need for discussion items is requested. In your packet, you have the current social media policy, it's the first one, two, three pages, and then put in a little trip, tips from Forbes on how to address issues associated with it. And we also have a draft policy that was used, or drafted using best practices from MML, other communities, some of it's from the city web, the city's existing policy, submitted by one of the aldermen. Based upon that, you will see a series of either, either purple or red comments on it. The red comments came from Native, our marketing consultant, when this was submitted. They are currently working on our social media marketing policy, so we asked them to, what's your, please give us your comments on it, so that we can make sure they're taken into account. We did request that they have their representative here, they declined, couldn't, couldn't get her up here. But, the comments on this draft, they've obviously submitted those in red, and then the other purple ones are for me to highlight issues where I think we need to be real clear and discuss it and make an ultimate decision as a board, so the board is crystal clear, and that makes it a lot easier for the staff to be crystal clear, as long as everybody's on the same page. So, you've had this since the, I'll, I'll, my, the notes are in the packet, so I'll leave it up to you guys to, if you have questions of me, we'll certainly do that, otherwise you guys do the discussion on this.
Well, and I'd like to add a couple of comments here before we start a discussion. Obviously, social media is necessary for us as a city to be open and transparent. However, if you look at some social media sites in general, they do have anonymous people who post, and oftentimes, those people are not interested in resolving issues, but rather interested in creating additional issues. I think if we can ensure that, as we discuss this social media policy, that we ensure that we invite everybody to participate in government, that's our responsibility as elected officials. However, in our efforts to be open and transparent as a governing body, I believe it is also incumbent upon those who choose to make comments and statements that they be open and honest. They, they claim that, you know, they want to protect their anonymity. My concern with that, though, is that here we are, we're, we're very open with our public about what's going on in meetings, et cetera. A concern I have, and I want to make sure it's addressed in the social media policy, is to ensure that if somebody has a legitimate concern, they're welcome to attend public meetings and to address the governing board in person. They'll say, hey, that's not fair, that's, you know, we don't want, we want to be anonymous. However, I believe, and I've had this discussion with a number of people, I believe that there are some who do not even live in this Smithville community, who simply are posting just to create problems for us as a city. I just want to share with the board my concern with that, and if we're going to be open and transparent, we would expect that those who would truly want to move this city forward and to make positive contributions on how we, as a governing body, can do better, to be open and transparent as well. And, rather than just being subjected to the negative criticism and oftentimes the misstatements and the times when they simply say things as if they were fact, and then other people get on the train and say, yeah, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're not in a discussion on the social media, but again, I want to make sure that we, as a city, it is our obligation as elected officials to make sure we are open and transparent. But by the same token, I don't think it is fair or equitable for us to be the target of closed and untransparent detractors from the city business. Corey?
So, I noticed that the social media policy recommendations, one of the papers in on it, is that we consolidate the city's social media pages into one social page, which departments. I know I've asked for that a couple times. It wouldn't be that hard to go to our city website page, have a little link that says our social sites. That way, everybody knows, because there's, there's a bunch of Smithville's pages out there that I have, the development page, I know Jack, you do that one, there's the city page, there's a...
Parks page, EDC.
School Resource Officer's page, and then you throw on Twitter and all the rest of them, and so, not to mention, we all know there's some fake, fake things out there too, and it will help differentiate between the legitimate ones and the non-legitimate ones. And if anonymity is a concern, clearly, there's a way to allow people to post a complaint to the city and retain their anonymous anonymity by doing so. I mean, I've done that before, and people can post things, and I'm sure it's already, probably already there.
On the website.
Well, and one of the concerns I have with that is, yeah, people can post that, but then you get a whole bandwagon of other people saying, yeah, they're doing this, and they're doing this, and then, a lot of those posts, in my opinion, are not necessarily true.
Well, and, I mean, you look at, I mean, Swap Shop as an example, sure seems to be the de facto place where people get their information, but there's how many people in there? 30,000? And how many people are listening?
Yeah.
I mean, it tells you everything you need to know already, so...
If I could ask you, you one quick question, Alderman Booth, you'd indicated consolidation. I guess my question is, we had kind of differentiated between the city stuff, the marketing stuff that, and then kept the police side separate in our mental aspect, because they, they kind of have different functions. For example, the SRO is more focused on parents with kids and kids, but the regular city website sometimes can get a little, what would be an appropriate descriptor, chief, with the regular police department page. It's a little different group that they're looking at, so...
Maybe the School Resource Officer probably belongs more on the school's webpage than it does on the city's webpage, but, I mean, it's just an example.
Okay, yeah.
I think anything that's city, city business specifically, outside a police department, should probably be one page. We should filter that message out using one, one centralized account.
And as I was researching this and trying to put this together, based on those best practices, that's what people kept pointing to, is, you know, with the algorithms changing all the time, the one way to make sure you get your message out, instead of having to post a bunch of stuff that maybe isn't relevant to city business, have one account. And that one account, then, with enough posts about stuff that's relevant, will keep it relevant and in front of folks.
Usually, when you create a page, you can post as the page.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you could...
As the current person.
Yeah, well, you can post as the page, you can post comments, for example, I can post on the city page as the development page. So, we have looked into the merger aspect of it, it's not incredibly difficult, and what it does is it brings all of the followers, they all come in to the main page. That would certainly be something we could easily not do, and then it would be a focus of, because to be quite frank, the most prolific poster that we ha, or page that we have, my estimation is that it's the Parks and Rec stuff, because they're constantly advertising their stuff. We've got, the city page is next, and they're real close to each other in total numbers. City page obviously has more followers, but merging them, I think we can make that work.
I don't know that you need to merge it, it's just, we need to, if I move to Smithville and I want to know, where do I go to get my information officially? Because everybody knows that there are places out there that you're going to get the drama, and you're going to get the real information, so where do I go to get the real information? Which Twitter account is really the miracle?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, it's an example.
Yes, yes.
Very good example. If I come to Smithville, oh, there's the managers. I mean, how do I know?
Yeah.
So, if you have a page on the city website that says, these are our Facebook page, you could be, I don't know if you will not, but these are our officially sponsored pages, and people will know.
Yeah, the direct link stuff, yes, and, and as, as Alderman Chevalier just indicated, the city and the police kind of keeping them separate. Eventually, in three to five, maybe seven to eight years, we're going to have a police department in a completely different building anyway, simply because of our growth.
There's just things that are more relevant, you know, folks, you know, public safety things that should probably, please, this is the police posting this, this is serious, as opposed to...
Right, right. And they have their engagement issues as well, and they're, you know, they do those things too, but first item for me was, if we can increase our engagement simply by merging it all into one, because many of the posts, Parks and Rec page posts something, it will get shared, often get shared by the city page, so that we're trying to tie them together. It may very well, I don't know, it may very well limit some of our extraneous work by simply merging it all into one. And I've seen various cities on how they do that, you know, the city of whatever, and then under it, the Parks Department is doing this, or the Rec, Parks and Rec is doing this, or whatever, so that you can highlight where it's coming from. I think there are ways you can craft that, but that's the first note on here, so...
I think what I, I'm not for letting people post anonymously. You can't put an opinion piece in the paper anonymously, you just can't do it, and...
Well, you can't come to City Hall and speak publicly to the board without stating your name and address either.
Right, and you don't necessarily have to post their name and address in their comment, but they need to be identified to the website as to who they are before they're allowed to make a comment, because they, they could be in North Carolina.
Well, and I don't disagree with that concept, but the implementation of it is nearly impossible.
Yeah, I don't believe in reality, we can, we can or should do that.
I'm a member of several programming websites that, that people come to for help, and if you want to, if you want to give an opinion on something that somebody needs to do to fix something, or to help somebody with the programming, you got to, you got to tell them who you are before they'll let you post.
Well, and, and unfortunately...
Because they've got to know that you're not...
Right, but unfortunate, we don't have that control, because we are members of Facebook, and we are members of Twitter, and we, as a city, have to follow their rules, not ours. We don't have that on our website, per se.
That's, that's one of the reasons I think you ought to come off Facebook more on the website.
Right, and ultimately, the direction, you will see in here, the direction is to funnel as much of it as possible through to a link to the website.
Yes, I'm, I'm not a fan of Facebook, for a variety of reasons, and that's one other.
There are, there are issues. It won't stop the, the Twitter, mayor Twitter account or whatever that is, it won't stop that stuff, just like it doesn't stop Swap 'n Shop or any of the other social media stuff.
But if you put on your page what the official ones are...
Yeah, which I think is a, is something that can be easily incorporated into the policy and done, no, no issue.
That's something I've got to keep in mind as well, and you brought it up, Jack, is that not everybody... that not everybody has a Facebook, not everybody on Twitter.
Right.
And you got to have, everything that's official's got to be on the city website first, foremost. In a lot of cases, we got a good subscription e-notify system on the city website, people who need Facebook.
Right. And unfortunately for us, while they don't have to go, that's where they are. And, and so, when they're there, if we can communicate them. Unfortunately, we're still too early in the marketing consultants' work to get a better idea of their proposed social media policy to try to bring people into the community. And they have three, based upon the stakeholder stuff from the EDC, they have three primary parties. It's the, the citizens of our community, it's potential visitors and people who may want to move here. Those are the three markets we're looking for, and, and some of it is more of a marketing than it is, than it is an information. We've got, we've got many venues we're trying to communicate through, and many parties we're trying to communicate to, so it...
One concern we also have to be honest, and I have the fact that when we adopt social media, Twitter, Facebook, et cetera, that in order to be properly responsive, we have fairly limited resources. We do have some regularly assigned people, I know, in the police department, for example, there, there are people who make posts on there, on the city website, some of the different departments. We have to be careful of, as we implement this, we need to make sure that we have the necessary resources, make sure that we're responsive as a city to those.
But forgive me, we're not implementing, I mean, we're, we're adjusting.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And it, it is a good idea, and I, I think we're doing that to a certain extent, but we should not, we should be using this, a city account. I mean, I know when the trash thing was getting voted on, I had people threatening, threatening me with guns on Facebook. I'm not kidding you. So, it's not that I'm concerned about it.
Just dish out to my family.
But, it, it's still, you know, you need to post factual information, and you should be able to use your position as a city representative and post that factual information and not be, you know, victimized.
Yeah, publicly attacked, or whatever, that, and that is real common. But, yeah, and ultimately, if we can limit this, the communications that are coming to Facebook, Twitter, whatever, as a formal, hey, this is going on, and direct those folks to the website where there's an email that gets sent out, to literally the, you know, if it's a, there's a car crash at this location, Facebook is not a real good place to post it, but you've seen it, I'm sure you've seen, hey, what's going on, you know? If there's something that needs to be reported to the police, police have a non-emergency number, or an emergency number, and that gets to them quicker. If there's a problem with a water line, water blowing out of the ground, like on Bridge Street a couple of weeks ago, we found out about it right around the time from, from Facebook. Someone posted at three in the morning, look at, you know, that there's a water leak. Right around the same timeframe, a police notified, or noticed, notified us to come out, because it was geysering up. But that was the first notice, was that it, it showed up on Facebook that there's a water leak.
But that's for like hot button issues, right? I mean, we don't need to send out emails and all that stuff, or just generic random things that they crop up, right?
Well, from my perspective, our website has a very effective report a concern function that we can adjust, and it's got potholes, it's got all of those things, but we are able to send the emails. When it goes into that system, it just doesn't go to the website, it sends an email to various sundry people. If it's a weed and trash deal, it goes to three people, myself, Dennis Witt currently, and the city hall page, which Cindy acts as the monitor and makes sure all the emails get sent out. Sometimes, they post it as a pothole, when in fact, it's weeds. So she has to redirect that to the right party. But we get those emails, and they pop up, and every employee that's, that's got the smartphone requirement that the mayor implemented, what, seven, six, seven years ago, when they get them, they know, okay, I can go check that out. If they're out in the field, I can go check that out immediately.
Well, I was more or less referring to whenever someone posts on Facebook, and then I think you were saying that they need to point back to the website, is that what you're saying? That you need to...
If we, right, if we have a response, I understood Alderman Booth's statement to mean, if we're going to respond, it should be, here's the policy on the website.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I understood you to mean.
And, you know, if someone's going on a rant about it, here's your place to report a concern on our website.
Right, right.
Because, I mean, you're not just not, at least...
No, right. Control the, the city response.
And track it, right?
Yeah.
State the facts.
Which, which is why I want the emails. Emails for us are easier to track. We do have a new system for monitor, for capturing all of our comments and posts on our websites, to comply with the sunshine law. That's part of that, Westland Caps, all the kids, that was one of the projects they did, was created a, an evaluation of all the different, and we, Linda did it, we, we've got one now. She's the records keeper, she keeps them with this program. So, those are all things that are incredibly important, and it's just, you know, we're getting ready to getting it into the difficult part of the policy, so...
So, attempting to edit this as we talk, the city will maintain one account per social media platform. The police department may maintain separate social media, but will follow the social media policy.
Yeah, and what's, you know, talking about people leaving comments and stuff on there, I, I got a couple of issues with section seven, specifically A and B. I'm not a huge, just leave comments, delete comments type person. A and B really, I mean, A definitely may not necessarily warrant removal. Let's say that, you know, someone posts something about, say, hey, we're closed today, and someone says, oh, well, where do I pay my water bill? You know, we should delete a comment, that comment means it's not directly related to the posted. So, I mean, I don't want that to get hung up where it just is as an excuse to leave people's emails.
I believe the intent of that was to, for totally unrelated comments.
Because what you said, I would say, is related, 100%.
Right.
Where do I pay my bill? If you're closed, where do I pay my bill? But if it's, we're going to be closed today, and it's, why is the street department not working on this street today, you know?
And even then, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking, why don't we just answer that, that question, and not delete the comment, just answer it. I mean, if someone was still reached out, you know, maybe they didn't understand, they should put it somewhere else, or start its own thread, whatever, but just answer the question.
And as often as possible, we do. As often as possible, we do. Sometimes, we just, you, you get the same question, or, you know, however...
But the, the answer should consist of, please contact the city.
Absolutely, yeah.
And not...
Right. If we have, if we have something directly on the website, and this is what Mike and I have discussed of, of late, if we, if we have something on the website, direct them to it. If we don't have something on the website, should it be there, and how do we get it there? Sometimes, it's a function of, yeah, it's there, it's hard to find. For example, the original social media policy, it's on the website, it's been on there since it was implemented, but it was buried in the board policies. So we pulled it out, copied it, and posted it, so that it would be its own document, and easier to, to traverse, instead of, here it is, go to page seven, and, you know, that kind of stuff. It's easier to just, here's your link, it'll pull the policy out.
So with that, are we, are we okay with A, then?
I mean, is there a way we can add to it in such a way, so that, you know, we can make it, make it known that, you know, we can automatically get your post deleted, if you're, you know, asking a simple question, and some can easily answer, or you can write it somewhere?
I think the purpose here, too, and part of this policy, is not to just say, hey, we don't like posts, we're going to delete it.
Yeah.
It's to make sure that we're all opposed to city business or responding to, but if there is a post or a response that is totally unrelated, or probably fits under C through H, we're not going to do it.
Let me, let me ask you, would, instead of being not topically related, but maybe something related to distracting from, or some, it's the, when they become so off-point that they're distracting the...
Correct.
Because it, this, this is a government speech, this is the government talking here.
Comments not related to city business, or the particular social media article being commented upon?
Maybe do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and all this is may.
Right. And, and first off, I, I'd like to highlight something, Missouri law doesn't allow the city to delete any comment.
No.
We cannot delete any of them. We hide them, we can hide them.
That's essentially what you're doing.
Yeah, well, it...
No, deleting means it goes away.
Hiding it, because we...
You can turn it over.
But, but hiding it means that some people can still see it. If we delete it, it just goes away, and even the person who posted it can't see it. But, yeah, state law does not allow us to delete it, because it's a communication to the city, and we have to keep those records.
And then I'm also concerned about B on there, comments in support of or opposition to the county's ballot measures. I'm afraid that if someone makes a comment about a ballot measure, or, or some, something, and if we delete that, are we not now making a political statement by hiding the comment?
Well, I think there are the conflict of interest stuff, and as it relates to, if you recall, we had a conversation with our attorney about what we could say related to the advertising. While I don't believe their posts are, if some, if someone comments, hey, support this person during the election...
Or if they say, don't support this person.
Right, or oppose them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever those happen to be, I think we run afoul of, of getting involved in the political aspects of, I mean, we're not supposed to be involved in politics, that's why you guys run as, don't run as Democrats or Republicans, it's, yeah, it's the non-partisan.
Well, we're not making a statement, it's someone from the public making a statement, so if we hide that, I think that's making a statement.
And arguably, it could. The problem is, if we hide it, if we don't hide it, then it becomes a, well, I think this guy should be, or I think this guy should be, all on the city's method of getting information out. So, it becomes somewhat distracting from our message, because we can't talk about it. As the city, we can't talk about political events like that.
I agree, I don't think we should.
Right.
I kind of think that hiding something is, is giving someone ammunition, and saying, oh, the city wants to suppress this information because they don't agree with my political statement.
And I, I don't, I, I think that is a valid point that someone can make.
However...
What if we get into two people, one person opposed to, and another one in favor of the same issue, and that's all they do is post it? They're back and forth and fighting on our page.
My concern with that is, we don't want the political conversation to be on the city's page, it would be, in my opinion, inappropriate, because we, as a city, have to be very careful with our statements made by the city, whether it be by me, by Jack, by any member of staff, or by any of you, we have to be very careful with, with what can be stated there. My concern is that I don't believe we should have our city, official city website and social media things be a political, become a political platform.
This would be, this would be a good candidate for one of those areas where you block it, and you just simply say, political commentary, not allowed on the city page.
Right. And that, and from my perspective, I think that if it's a, if it's supporting anything, we can just say, don't do it here, you, you can have your opinion, but don't do it here because...
You do it on your social media page, but you can't do it on the city.
So, everything I looked at, from MML, ICMA, and the different city policies I looked at, they're one form or the other, and this is probably the best language that I found, which I think came from one of the ICMA best practices.
Right.
It was in every single one of them.
And here's the other aspect, I cannot fathom a concept, since the city can't talk about politics in that fashion on our pages, how B would not be a violation of A, unrelated to the post. But to be very specific...
But it could be city business.
Right, right. But if, and that's where we really run into trouble, is if we, I don't, I don't want to run down the path where we get ourselves into an election violation of some sort, a campaign violation of some sort, by simply allowing people to discuss it on our page. It's our, it's our speech that we're talking about here, if we just don't allow it to come in, then we don't ever get into the pickle that we could potentially get in.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm still, I still think, like, if you make a post that's saying, hey, water rates, water rates are going up this next year, someone says, I'm tired of water rates going up, it's time to vote everybody up, we delete that post, but basically, I feel like we're suppressing it.
But that's not advocating a candidate or...
It's, yeah, it's not a, a support of, yeah, and political speech by itself is fine, nearly all of it is, but this says, in support of or opposition to political campaigns or ballot measures. What you, for example, what you identified, vote the bums out, that's a real common phrase, and it doesn't mean you're talking about a specific campaign or ballot measure.
We may all be out next year.
Because there's all kinds of venues for that. The question is, do we need to make the city that venue?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's in the interest of our, of the city.
And that's ultimately why all of these issues I wanted to have discussed here, because we've got varying viewpoints on this, and...
I just, you and I, I'm questioning on, I think it's a good thing to have in there, I mean, maybe from a reality perspective, it isn't, but from a legal perspective, it probably is.
Right.
But, and, you know, people debate that as well. But the question is, should they be hidden, or should the whole thing just be locked, and just like that? And I don't know what better solution.
Well, it, you mean, so nobody else can comment?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, you get one in, one or two get in there, and they post a little thing, and you notice, okay, it's in.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what better answer for that.
I think you've got to do, we have to do something, otherwise, this, this thing would get quickly out of hand, and we would, we probably would be abolished, sunshine law, ultimately.
Well, the last thing we would want, and the campaign, finance and the campaign support laws would be the bigger concern, because they have bigger fight. And just, if we can avoid that, but ultimately...
I think Corey's got a good idea, just block it and just say, political speeches not, let's see, being for or against a particular candidate, or bond issue, or ballot issue is not allowed on the site.
Well, and I, I would suggest, an alternative to that would be to hide the comment, and then post a city comment right behind it, that identifies comments in support of or in opposition to a political thing will be removed.
Yeah.
Just to highlight every time.
I like that, and then maybe point right to that social media policy.
Absolutely.
Section, everything.
Yep, here's what we're doing, we're, we're telling you why, don't do this, and to be quite frank, it becomes a, a factor of advertising. When people find out that we're just going to pull any political support or political opposition to a candidate or an issue, they just will quit doing it.
It ceases to go.
Yeah, they don't...
So, under seven, we kind of sort of say that, do we need to be clear? Like, on seven, it says, users and visitors to social media sites shall be notified, the intended purposes of the site is to serve as a mechanism of communication, blah, blah, blah.
No, I think it probably needs to add, just something in there, just a copy set of removal, the message stating the reason why, and a link to the, this appropriate policy that they're...
Yeah, the, the section.
...of their, any of these, something in front of the...
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's, that's not, I mean, that's more of a operational issue, but putting it in the policy will certainly give it inst, get it past institutional knowledge, and it becomes a, a written forever rule. Unfortunately, now that we're, Alderman Blomker seems to be taking great notes here, so I'm going to take the liberty, there are some legal limitations I've mentioned here, most of them would be shocking to everyone here as to what, but there are cases and arguments that support the proposition that profane language and content is not subject to us limiting. There are, in, I don't know that there's an Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals, which would apply to us, but there are other cases out there that profane language is allowed. There is language out there that, as long as it's not truly criminal discrimination, hate speech, et cetera, there are some cases out there. I would prefer personally that we leave it in there and let somebody sue us. I would prefer personally that we leave it in there and let somebody sue us. That's something I'd prefer to have, if we were going to have-
Just because, just because, we-
Let's not invite them to do so, but if they do, they do.
Yeah, well, we've got to have the content and it's got to be hidden first. But it's, it's not a definitive answer legally, but-
In the matter of-
There's case law out there that's-
And there could be case law out there, and I'm sure there is, but-
There is.
But I think we need to be very proactive and just say, "We don't prefer language or extreme language, we will, may be removed." And if it is and somebody sues us, that's-
Okay, what's the next, next concern?
Yeah.
I think the challenge with that, though, is everyone's tolerance on what they consider profane versus what they consider this is-
Right, which is instrumental in why we need to have as quick a monitor on this as possible. The good thing is, we can hide something and if there's an issue that arises of relating to hiding it, it can always be unhidden versus the delete. But if there is concern that that's, you know, any staff member that has administrative privileges sees something that they believe violates that, if it's in a situation where we can't have a confab of staff related to it, it's always better to hide it and then come back and unhide it, if we can't definitively say it violates the policy and be able to post why.
Right. Any other concerns around eighteen? On eighteen, the comment said that, I put in before noon because, you know, I don't think we can, I wanted to make sure that it was appropriate, that doesn't mean that it can't be more often, and I'm fine trying to tweak this language to meet what she was trying to suggest, but-
Yeah, yeah.
I was trying to go with a minimum instead of a-
How about, how about when we have blowups on the weekend?
Well, and we've got, we've got staff that are monitoring it and interesting, we have Alderman as well, they often send emails, if you guys don't have it, "Hey, what's going on here, what's this question, what's going on?" You know, if my phone doesn't get turned back on when I leave, I won't hear any of the notifications that come in, so sometimes I wake up in the morning and there are a whole slew of it and it's, "Oh, great, what happened?" But ultimately, I don't disagree with Alderman Blomker's assessment here.
Kind of set the floor, not the ceiling?
I mean, between eight and, eight and five, when we're open, it's going to be as it comes in and thereafter-
Some of that kind of goes toward a job description in some ways. I mean, I know for a fact that I work for a 400.
Right.
But because it's in my contract.
Right, 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 and from our perspective internally here, if we're a salaried employee, we're on the, on the clock whenever business calls. Now, it doesn't mean that we have to do business at all times, we don't have to sit around waiting for Facebook to blow up, but if we see it, then we do have the responsibility to step in.
We may want to change the language there to something that says, "When activated comments and forums should be reviewed every workday on a regular schedule, at least once a day before noon or something."
And workday could be Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that way, that would be an absolute minimum, you know, once a day.
Not, yeah, not less than once a day, but I think the language should be along, should be reviewed as is, short, as quick of a frequency as time or time and staffing will allow, not less than one-
I would like to see twice a day at a minimum, instead of just once a day.
Well, and you need to remember in the paragraph above that, it says, "To that end, when the appropriate resources are available, those things will be activated." Sometimes we may not have the appropriate resources, so that timeliness may not be there. So again, that's what my original comment was a while ago relative to the resources we have to be able to monitor.
It should be reviewed periodically throughout the day.
Yeah, to be quite frank, it needs to be reviewed, not periodically, it needs to be regularly reviewed during the day. Right, it becomes a problem when it's at six o'clock to three in the morning.
Because that's what most people-
Yeah, yes.
That's what most people are going to be on, is six o'clock to three in the morning, when they get home from work and get on there, so it's imperative that this be looked at at the end of the day, so that there's not stuff on there all night long, because that's where most of the people would see it.
And also on the beginning of the day for-
Absolutely.
Early morning.
And I can tell you, the current practice is, when we get up in the morning, we're looking at it and seeing if there's something we've got to do immediately, if it happened or not. And I will tell you, the last thing I do before I go to bed is to make sure there's nothing, there's no, nothing hanging out there that needs to be addressed.
So I believe all these have alerts that the appropriate staff's getting an alert when it comes up, you know. What language do you want in here? Because I think they're getting alerts as they pop up, and if it's relevant, they're addressing it in short order.
Well, and if, for example, if we're awake, my phone's going to be going nuts over on the-
But do we want that policy at Jackson Lake?
Yeah, yeah, right. So I don't know that there's necessarily as, as quickly as practicable staff assigned to this, we need to review it, we need to get, keep monitoring it, even if it's a 3:00 AM post.
As quickly as practical.
Right, right, as quickly as practical. We just-
Because again, we don't, we don't have people monitoring that on staff, like that was bad.
Yeah, right.
Can we just say, "When activated comments and forums should be reviewed?"
As soon as-
Periodically?
No, you start with, like, you say, "Regularly throughout the day." I mean, otherwise it's-
I know it sounds fuzzy, but obviously, we're going to be on top of those.
Right.
How about as often as practical?
When activated comments and forums should be reviewed regularly throughout the workday and at least before noon?
And I would eliminate work, just say throughout the day, because if it's a Saturday or Sunday, we still need to be monitoring. That's when, Sunday's when all the crap comes, by the way.
I don't know, but noon, what is, what is this possible?
So you're at least putting in, you know, it will get checked at least once?
Yeah, definitively going to happen, and definitively has to happen before noon, but if we're going to expand it to regularly throughout the day, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see a change to, to as practically as possible.
Yeah, so I think you're, yeah, regularly throughout the day and as often as-
Practically possible.
Yeah, practicable?
Yeah.
That's the right word, isn't it?
I don't think that's, I think that's kind of still vague myself, but that's okay.
Right.
That's what I was trying to put in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like Jack's mug in there.
Something a little bit more meat to it.
I agree, it should be multiple times a day, but I don't think we need to call out.
It's news at all.
Every odd hour on the hour. Okay, any other comments?
Under eighteen, the only one I had was the, yeah, I'm assuming that's where the, yeah, "Poster comments requiring a service request will be submitted to the Smithville Direct for inclusion in the customer relationship management system." And my question is, is this suggesting that we should submit the request for them or direct them to that provision?
My opinion, based on everything else I've looked at and read, is we should encourage them to do it, but if they don't, we need to, we need to log it, and if they then subsequently go in, you can link the two, that we're aware.
Okay.
Is that-
We want to make sure that those who truly need to report a concern and who are reporting a concern, that they are then accountable for reporting that concern and not, if they don't report-
So refer and report.
It's your fault, city.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
So ultimately, the poster comments requiring a service request will be submitted-
Submitted to Smithville Direct, da, 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 and a request of, and the requester will be referenced to that site?
Yeah.
Referred to that site?
And maybe if we do, on, "Poster comments instead of requiring a service request, but making a service request?" Shall be referred to Smithville Direct and submitted or whatever by staff or-
But if you don't, then Facebook will become your method to receive your complaints.
Right, right, exactly.
We want to send it back and track it and that allows us to track follow-up and, you know, know that there's been, now, 148 water main breaks complaints along that line, so now it's time to go ahead and do something on it.
Yes, yes, okay, so combination of two, that one's easy enough, okay?
You know, my goal is that we have this ready to go for the next board meeting.
And then under nineteen, not certain we need all of the response to them, because it seems to be all of the responses are nearly identical, maybe I misread it.
They're identical, with slightly different responses.
Under B, though, should some citizens use social media to suggest ways, should it be in which local services can be improved, instead of in local services can be improved?
Or just delete in?
Yeah.
Suggest ways local services can be improved?
Yeah, I like that.
Shorten it up even?
Yeah.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
I'll refer it.
Once we get a new version of this graphed-
I had a couple editors go through to help catch stuff, but-
Love that one.
Nope.
Cognizant of sunshine, I want to make sure we abide by such.
Okay, okay.
One thing, are we looking at still, around B or C or where?
Where, yes, all three of them, all four of them, there's four apparently.
On the, let's look at, if we may, let's look at merited attack on C for mid, under the subsection on response. We need to be careful about suggesting when the timeframe, when a resolution to a particular problem may be implemented, because they require a policy change or may require some other change that would not normally be just a simple response to a user. Does that make sense, if a change is necessary, what's concerned brought to light, describe what changes will be made, as well as a timeframe for implementing them? And whoever is responsive, whoever is responding here may not know, may not know that, so we need to be careful about, about that, does that make sense?
Yes, because timeframes are impossible to determine.
It might be something up to the board, it might be something up to city staff, so it's-
Right, so I think we may want to-
Parameters of where?
We may want to either delete that portion or make some changes to that, because we want to make sure that if whoever responds from the city site to these issues, they're like, "Oh yeah, we'll have that resolved in two weeks," when it's, when we don't know.
Maybe in this particular case, it would be a good time to say, "Contact Alderman." To have the issue rather than on the board.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea, and we may for that.
Yeah, the Alderman leaving will tell you that.
I think this is going to be a three, three vote. Yeah, but I know where you stand. And I'm supportive of that, I just, you know, if, if we know that, you know, hey, this, this water, water ban issue, you know, we know now, here's our plans to get it resolved and here's what we plan to take care of it. If we know that, I think you share it, if you don't know it, you know, point to the appropriate source.
But don't make commitments on resolution if we don't know that, if you really don't know, then that's one we can raise when we do that, that's all I'm saying.
And if we don't have a timeframe, we can give a timeframe, so.
The bigger, the bigger thing from my perspective, looking at it, not the elected side, the staff side, is the phrase before that, "Describe what changes will be made."
Yeah.
Some of it's going to come to you all for a decision.
It may require a poll session.
Right, right.
But at that point, it's, you know, we'll share this with the board for their, their consideration, right? That's the, that's staff, right?
What about the change act, to describe what changes need to be made, rather than will be made, because the board may or may not, not make the changes.
Changes necessary, once the concern's brought to light.
Should we have another section to our agenda, we have public comment, we have social comment, and some of these issues that are being posted that were impromptu right now, we brought them in, have an agenda?
What, what do you need, I mean?
I don't know if you know, but I, I try to look to see, see what people are posting, so if they have something-
I mean, we already know people don't really make it down there, so if there is something legitimately posted on our, on our site that would be considered falling under this category of merit in the pack, and, you know, the issue that they brought up has merit, then maybe needs to be put on an agenda for social?
There was actually a discussion at one time in one of our meetings about bringing stuff to this board that, that come through social media in some manner.
And I think there are two, we have discussed it, we haven't fleshed out any procedure on how to do it, but I will, I'll turn the tables on him for you, or no, I'll turn the tables on him for you, as it relates to that issue, if the Aldermen who are reviewing social media as well, which many of you are, the Aldermen have already got a method to do it. I saw on Facebook this question, I think it's valid, to be quite frank, Alderman Chevillier's already done it two or three times.
Put it on an agenda.
Yeah.
Several of our agenda items this evening, right?
Well, I just thought, as an example, you could have that section officially in our agenda.
Yeah.
You had to hide a bunch of comments, you could say, "Oh, by the way, this is our time to talk about the Alderman, you know, during the social media discussion we had to hide, probably supposed because of this or that," or you don't have to get into specifics, and that would also be an opportunity for each one of us, "Oh yeah, I saw this or I saw that," or whatever, I don't know, I just thought it'd be-
Yeah, no, I don't, yeah.
I'd actually, you know, leave current community reports or something, maybe we can have like a social media report, and then-
Yeah, and that's one of the things I was going to ask, as you saw, I took the liberty of changing the report of concern to Smithville Direct and try to point people there, you know, something already exists, you know, direct them there, let them provide their, their comments and feedback, but then can we get a monthly report on what those issues were, so if there's something that continues to pop up, that we can see it?
If that makes sense, then we would put on an agenda for discussion.
Right.
I like the idea of bringing it up in the, in the staff report, because you get it twice a, twice a month that way.
And I don't, I don't disagree with any of those, the, the only concern I have is the evaluation of whether it merits bringing, being brought up to the board.
And that would-
That, that's my only, oh, that's piddly, or, oh, this is important.
That's our interpretation, if the resident or somebody disagrees, they can show up.
Right.
But forgive me, if it's reported to Smithville Direct, we don't see it, right? If it's posted online, right?
Yeah, right.
There's a good chance we'll see it.
Oh, you're talking about the, the-
Monthly or, or bi-monthly report of concern, we had these reports of concerns in this-
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, okay. Yeah, because they come to a whole slew of different emails, depending on what the issue is, so we can certainly consolidate those complaints, the way they come in, what the issue is, the location. Report of a concern of weeds and grass at this location and do a report on that, okay, yeah, that, and that doesn't even have to- yeah, that, and that doesn't even have to be in the policy, we can, that's just board information, but yeah.
We need to be moving along.
I like the alternative suggestion on the social media venues used by the city intend to be a series of informal communication, I like that, I think I'm good with that.
Where's that?
Which number?
Page 15, 20.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Still page 14.
Item 20 that's been deleted?
Was it on the next page?
Yeah, the, the comment is, shows up on the next page.
On the next-
Yeah, okay, yeah. And this kind of brings up what we were speaking of earlier, that they're not monitored 24/7, but that we can't timely address all of them, but we're going to do our best, so if you've got a problem with the police, report the direct method, instead of Facebook method, or whatever, yeah. And the tracking system, we already have in place, so when, when those emails come in to the current report of concern function, unfortunately for me, I get nearly all of them anyway, as Director of Development, some of them I don't, thank goodness, but, so I, we're already monitoring those, and it's a common practice, when the street department say responds to someone, we get copies of it, so we know, okay, they've, they've responded.
You know, on 23, I'm open to suggestions, my, my, this borrowed language here was, was simply meant to be if we're posting something official, like, you know, say the, the city administrator has something to say, that we identify who's, who's saying it, you know, the small talk aspect, you know, I don't think we need to be responding, you know.
There's, there's two aspects to it, there is posting as the city, this is something that's coming up, and maybe you can respond as the city, and then there's, you know, there's a water main break, and then you've got the water department responding as, in his official capacity, and I think that's-
Right. And ultimately, my biggest concern here is when the city is being, when it's the city page, or the city official page on Facebook, for example, is commenting, that needs to be the official city position, and putting, which employee did it, I would prefer not to, we have the ability to verify who did it, if it's a disciplinary issue, we've got that access. On, as an administrator, I know who posts everything, because it shows up, as an administrator, you get to know who posts it, so if there's a problem with a comment, we're going to know who it is, and with Linda's tracking system as well.
Yeah, I, I think what we're trying to get at here is that if they're posting as their official city capacity, so, you know, if we're posting as parks, you know?
Oh, you're saying like Bob Limley Water Department?
Yeah, so if Bob has his, it comes up under Bob Limley, he just needs to identify himself as, as the water superintendent, this is my-
Yeah.
Okay, because I do that a lot, a comment, but don't tell them who I am.
If someone in the official capacity, a lot of people don't know who works at the city.
Right, right.
So, if they're responding, they know, hey, this is the guy, he's who he's talking about.
Okay, okay, that's, yeah.
And the more we can post as the city, and as, and get away from personal accounts, I think that would be a good idea.
I like that, but I also like there in C where it talks about the example there of just leaving edit things, instead of getting too-
Yeah, and if-
Personal, it's more business.
Yeah, if it's just that, I don't think they need to, you know, we don't need to identify any, anything there.
Yeah, that can be the official city page, saying, thank you, but if we're throwing out, if we've got an employee on their own account, because sometimes the responses, if I'm on my phone, I have literally no idea how to change between accounts on any given post, because I've got to find, you've got to find the right button, and if you're trying to respond quickly, sometimes for me, it comes up as development, and sometimes it comes up as me, Jack Hendricks, sometimes it actually has city, I, I do not know why, when, where, or how that occurs, it just happens.
So I'm not suggesting we identify more, I'm suggesting that we use the city page more.
Okay, okay, then, and that becomes an interpretation understanding, I can understand that, I don't need, we don't need to change the language, I understand where it's at.
All right, now, 15 down, four to go.
Okay.
We can be able to get that?
I think so.
Or give me your notes, and I'll do that, I don't care. If we do, let's make it very, very, very short.
Why don't we just keep driving?
Yeah.
So we'll move on.
Just go on website recreation software.
This one was submitted based upon the board meeting we had a month or two ago, where we were asked to bundle the two applications, we bundled them, biggest concern I have is, we've got no further direction as to what we need to do here, other than bundle them into one, so we took the two, bundled them into one, and some of the, the responses that we provided, the red stuff, having, we regularly, or I regularly have conversations with Mayor Fulmer, in my position as acting city administrator, about what to do. In this scenario, we had both of the two, we had three bidders, one of which was so far out of budget, that we didn't even evaluate it too much, it was like forty or thousand or more, just for one, didn't include, so it was one of those, never mind. So we're down to the, the two primary folks that we've been talking about in the past, but since both of them have made alterations to their original proposals, the mayor indicated that we needed to highlight that, as his, his words were, and at the time, I didn't know what he was talking about, that he didn't want us to be a beta site, he explained that to me now, so, and he said, everybody else will understand that, Jack, so, whether they do, whether you do or not, that's fine.
Everybody else will understand that.
I, I certainly didn't, now I do understand what a beta site is, so from that perspective, what I'm asking with this submittal is, we're not looking for a vote, we just need a better idea of what our priorities are associated, moving forward, we submitted this under the improved communications, and to make us, you know, the rec stuff was primarily so that we could improve the customer service on that end, since we were bringing it in-house, that's why we put it out in August of last year, to hopefully be ready by January, we're limping through that, but ultimately, this is a board clarification of your priorities on the website and the rec software, combination what your all's priorities are, that's how we put it together.
Jack, would you also explain the board, what the red on the website rec comparison, what the black versus the red?
Right, when I requested this to be put together into one tab, was based upon this beta site stuff, here's the original bid, here's the new bid, we know there were changes, one of the submitters did not submit a bid on the website portion, so the first, however many lines that is, 2530, down to the line that says, somewhere on there, I thought there was a reference to, is it not showing up there? Oh, I didn't bring my copy in, somewhere on that list is a, a highlight marker where it shows where, what's that, right by your left hand?
Software services?
Yes, yes, where the software services line starts, that part, that part further down is all the rec side, everything above it, which is all in red on the right side, is because that company did not submit a website proposal. You know, for whatever reason, those comments are not showing up on Alderman Wilson's deal, and I can't figure out why, so, nor mine.
When it says current, that means that they are, they have, that municipal CMS has the ability to do that, right?
Right, and we had multiple things in it, in the original bid, and in the, the other one was whether it was current, whether it was custom, or whether it was not possible.
Okay.
So, I didn't bother going through and highlighting them all, but ultimately, my bigger thing is, we have some changes that have occurred on both of the two primary bidders, we need to figure out from you guys, what your priorities are.
And where you say custom, that, that means that-
It doesn't exist, but they can code it.
That they can, they can set it up, but I'm wondering on the custom stuff, because I assume it's going to cost some money, but how far down the road, how many years from now are going to be a point of sale cash register, I mean, some of this stuff isn't really needed now, is it?
Well, we have in the parks campground, we could use that right now.
Well, is the custom, does that mean they're going to charge an extra to develop that, or they're just going to develop it as part of their contract?
It, it's ultimately, I, the, I think it's still open to that scenario.
Well, you know, I, I will say, I was probably one of the most adamant people about this in December, and the primary reason why, and this still stands today, is that when I spoke to our current webos, the recreational period, and there was absolutely no reason to still to this day, that we have not turned that on, and looked at, to see what it can or cannot do, and-
They, well, just, we asked to turn it on, they wouldn't.
Okay, well, whatever the reason is, we need to get that turned on, it's not, apparently not, not going to cost us anything, and before we dump $25,000 into something new, you've got to wait, and if it does not do the things that we needed to do, then we can clearly point out this, 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 and this, and then we can go back to them, because I've done it, you've done it, I've called our current web provider for the few things that have been pointed out as failures in the process, in less than a day, in fact, in some cases, a few minutes. So, give them an opportunity, and if they can't, and if they really truly can't do the things that we need them to do, then we clearly have some itemized things that, okay, it's worth spending $25,000 on fix or not, because right now, everything's just kind of in the air, I will tell you that, they will tell you they did some of the bids last time, because if it's really hard to, it would sure have been a bit, that would have been their argument, that's what I was told, so, you know.
Well, and to clarify that too, Corey, both Jack and I specifically requested them to submit a bid, even though it was free, so that they, so we could compare, and properly compare during the evaluation process, they chose not to submit a bid, and so we can't, we can't force vendors to, or propose vendors to submit bids, and again, there was, there had been some support concerns too, because a number of staff have tried to contact them, and about the only ones that they respond to well are to Cindy and to Linda, and even then, when, when they put documents out there to be whizzy wig, they show up on the website, they're not whizzy wig, the fonts are changed, and so they have to manually go back in, so from that functionality itself, it's not truly a, a functional current feature, and there, and there's others, but again, on this process, we specifically asked and invited the municipal CMS to submit a bid, and to submit a bid to the RFP, even though it's free, so at least we could compare apples to apples. They chose not to do that.
So based on that, we are where we are today, right? To answer your question, what I want to know is, can it support the scorecard and transparency initiatives that I, I brought up and-
Scorecard, what's the scorecard?
The Mo Mix stuff I sent you.
Okay, I don't recall, the terminology's got me.
And, as well as, you know, the fiscal conservator in me wants to know, what are we getting for 20, $25,000 additional dollars that we can't, or we don't already have? And that's, that's my concern, is, what are we getting for that $25,000?
And lastly, my other main concern is, on the original RFP for the recreational software, there was a lot of very extreme requirements for that, and you took those strange requirements, and you posted them in Google, you could find pages and pages and pages of other municipalities who use that exact same RFP in different orders, and every last one was ready, Civic Plus, so that's a concern. And, I mean, I'll give you an example, Staff of Virginia, where I just moved from, their RFP, almost word for word, was the same one we put out, so if we have true requirements, then it's necessary for our recreational software, it shouldn't be some sort of template of graphics, and we should know, these things are really needed for our program, and not some sort of template that is very hard to interpret, and that was my other biggest concern about.
And ultimately, when that was put together in July of last year, I know that the primary, you know, when, when you look at these from a staff perspective, you look at the Cadillac version all the way down to the Fiat version, and you throw it out there for all, give us all the functions you do, what we're here today, why we asked this to be on today, is what are the importance to you all? I mean, it's your priorities that we're trying to implement, if we don't know what those are, which ones do we devalue in that list, and which ones do we raise to the higher value in that list, that's where we're at.
The easiest way to get to the answers to that question is to turn on something that's free, and doesn't cost us anything.
Right, and, and ultimately, the, the current scenario is, we no longer have the option to do that, to turn it on, they've refused it, they've indicated that where they're, where they're at is, they will either win the bid, or they won't win the bid, and then we'll turn it on then.
When do all those numbers, one second, do you have?
Oh, yeah, we can get those whenever we bring this up for the ultimate resolution on it.
Also, given the new-
It's like seven and twenty something?
So given the new, the answers, the new answers to these questions, and obviously the numbers are already in a bid, is the staff out of their condition?
Not yet, because we, we want to make sure we're making the priority, if we've got one that all of the functions are needed, or as a priority, and where we sit, there may be one, and if it's limited, then it's, it's the other, because it's, the price is $7,000 something for-
The, the big question here is, staff has been beat up on this before, staff is the, is the, our staff are the ones who are going to be using the software to work to, on the rec, let's take the rec software, for example, they're the ones who are going to be implementing it, they're the ones who are going to be using it, they're the ones who have been evaluating that. My concern is that, again, and I mentioned this several times, is that the goal for the board is to provide the priority and the budget, and then we need to-
And oversight, don't forget oversight.
Obviously, obviously, but by the same token, my concern is that we're trying to micromanage our staff, say what they want and what they don't want, and so that's why it's back to board now, to say, hey, what are your priorities here? Well, if we can get this stuff free while we're spending $25,000 on, for another, on another supplier, you know? We haven't been able to test it, because, well, we haven't been able to test the other people either.
You've been, you're asking us to, to evaluate something, but then I look at things like course with roads, why do we need that? Key fobs, why do we need that? Cash registers, I still don't know that we need that right now, preset sales keys, locking cash doors, I mean, that's very difficult for me to sit here and go, yeah, we can't pick this one over that one, because of things that, I don't know.
Okay, so what do you want staff to do?
And there's a couple things here where, you know, municipal offers like automated EFT, Civic Plus doesn't offer that, there's a few other things like document attachments, I mean, these are some easy things, I'm like, why would Civic Plus not?
I'd be surprised, with automated EFT, everything goes that away, and it's, you know, they hold, so-
So forgive me, what?
I just want to see the numbers, what is the numbers like? That's kind of what I'm asking.
I'd like to see the numbers, I would like to see, based on this priority list, these aren't all a priorities, so-
Yeah.
You and, you and staff, who are the ones who are going to use it, you know, is, is a locking cash door an a priority, I kind of probably doubt that it is, so rank that.
Okay.
I mean, you look at this proposal, and the first half of the first page is for the Civic Plus site, the other three pages are for the recreational site, and that just seems a little much, to have, and it kind of goes back to my original comment about the RFP, where it seemed to be a templated RFP that used by many municipalities, mainly at the county level, like you, and we're trying to pick us pieces off, or that probably is a little, the requirements are a little much for our city at this point.
I mean, there's some things on there, just, I don't, I get like, page formatting. What am I, what am I supposed to make of that? How do I know that's...
There's a lot of these, I need more of a definition of what does this accomplish? Before I could know, is it an A priority, or is it D?
I say we want to autoformat the units, but I don't know what unit is, or what can be formatted as, so...
We can certainly do a staff ranking of importance of the items in here, of what we need immediately, what we can use immediately, what we need in the near future, what we need in the far future.
And maybe a little bit of explanation on...
And I think the, right, and I think the ranking system will allow us to boil that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because right now, a lot of this, I'm like, like barcode scanning.
And there's a lot of things, you know, like in-code integration. I mean, you could get stuff integrated into the utility software than what you need. You know, for cash registers, you're just supporting that. And there's just a lot of interesting...
Right. Ultimately, yeah, because we currently have an EFT, as I understand it. Third-party EFT, I don't remember, I think it's actually InCode that provides that service. But I'm not 100% certain on that. We'll have, we'll be able to have staff do a deeper dive into ranking the issues, now that I know where you guys are. I mean, it's, this is, I'd prefer to have this conversation now, so that we're not at the, here's our recommendation, and you guys are going, well, what's this mean, what's that mean?
And I'm sure some of us are still going off of the conversation in December, where we are working under the assumption that a lot of this we could have had back in January of last year, and been working on trying to build out our rec program, assuming that what we're able to true. If that whole thing is completely different, then that's probably an issue as well.
Any further discussion on the website, right, software? Okay, let's move on. Let's move on to the water, one second.
So, I requested that this be added to the agenda after trading some emails with Jack. You suggested that you thought you might have a solution to this, if you want to...
Yeah, and ultimately, I don't know, it's the one that won't cause a major disruption in how we deliver, and it doesn't require us to lose a billing cycle throughout the year. In order to get this 21 days, would be to simply do what Spire does. If you look at your gas bill, if you happen to have it, it's got a due date, and then next to it in the next box is late fees assessed after date. When we assess the late fees, doesn't impact any of the other way we do the business, so that one isn't a problematic for us. What that will do is substantially shorten the time period for when late fees apply and when people get shut off. So, if someone's at below our cutoff, but the late fees put them over the cutoff, they will get notice upon the assessment that you have two days to pay, or three days to pay, before you're shut off. So, that would be our proposal, to make this just like Spire's. We can do that simply by assessing late fees on a date that is 21 days after the first of the month.
Yeah, and one thing to remember here, too, one of the requests here was to be in accordance with state law, and Jack, you'll have to probably explain as fair as I can. The state requirement to have a 21-day window to, once you receive your bill and pay your bill, is a state law for those entities who are for-profit entities. They do not apply legally to us as a city.
Understood, but I think this is a good fix that we can solve the problem that exists in a reasonable measure.
Right.
If we stretch out to the 21 days, our, it won't, will no longer be a monthly billing cycle, it'll be a five-week billing cycle, or...
Well, if we change it, just change the late fee assessment, we'll get there. I don't know what there's going to be, for example, we started down this because folks were doing the checks. Some folks, I'm sure, will, oh, it's not, late fees don't kick on until the 21st, so I'll do it on the 21st. We're still going to have that problem.
Sure.
If they do, that's why I would suggest we're going to do it, let's bifurcate it into a due date and late fees assessed date, so those folks will notice and send it on the 15th of the month, so that we're not getting into the scenario where we're constantly having...
I know from my perspective, one of the main things that made me bring it up, and I know it's a product of both those reasons, but the main reason I originally brought this up a while back is because people who pay online bill pay through their bank, those checks were being, because they had to be sent out through the mail, those checks from the bank. They paid in time, and then through the mail system, they became...
Yeah, or their bank, yeah.
And it's those situations that I was trying to buy a solution to.
Right. And ultimately, associated with that, it just, when I sent you all the last bit of data at the last meeting, that's when I was able to clarify a couple of things. About one-third of all the people that use that online bill system, where they use their own bank, one-third of them are still submitted ACH. We have banks here in town that offer ACH submittals, so it occurs on the day you select electronically, and there's no chance of...
Because for a lot of people, we don't know whether it's ACH or not. They pay it, and they think it's done, and then they can even watch checks float around the bank.
Right.
The bill pay vendor should indicate to them if it's ACH or check.
And even if they, right, and even if they don't, if it doesn't allow you to pay it on the very next day, then you know it's a hard check being cut. That's...
So, what's the link on the new actual late fee date to the cutoff date? What's that?
The, what?
The new late fee date?
To the cut, yeah.
Or shut off, what's that?
Five to six days. Depending on when the, that date is set in our system as the 27th. It's always been the 16th, and we charge late fees on the 17th. And it was 10 days following that, so the 27th. But if the 27th falls on a Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday, it bumps to the following Monday, because we never want to shut off on a Friday. If we shut off on a Friday, they'd be off the whole weekend.
And so, I know you put this in the report, but are there anywhere closer to being notifications?
We have not gotten the formal proposal from InCode on the cost, but we are trying to put together a proposal, we'll likely have to bring to you all with that anyway. Two options, one, we're looking at both the, and it's text, I don't believe they offer email, they do offer text, and we're looking at e-billing as well, so we maybe just eliminate some of the mail stuff, if people want to sign up for electronic billing.
If it gets too expensive, can we not just have an automatic city email, or alternative, maybe for bill date, check or grant?
If they've submitted that kind of stuff, we can. If they don't, they have to give us their email. We don't collect it, and sometimes they don't update it, so...
So, they'll have to, anyways, if we pay for it, or if we're going to do it, so...
Right. Yeah, they'd have to sign up for it.
They'll have to have those on file for some of these people.
Right. Some of them we do. I don't know the methodology of tracking through that, but I would imagine there is a way to do that. And if they're already signed up on the e-notifications on our website, we can, bills should, just do a post the first day of every month, that bills have been posted online.
Can we look at that option, just as something that you're...
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Any more questions on water billing? Taylor, do you want to, next one, Sue Rebecca?
This one, I provided the three relevant ordinances. The first ordinance was from 1981, that just mentioned that all the users had to have it constructed to prevent backflow. Then it came back in 86 and changed to the language we have now. And then the last one is the most recent ordinance that we adopted on this, from 2013, it looks like.
I think my biggest concern with this, and I'm not saying it's really right or wrong, or any of this, I just simply, as a new resident moving into the city, if you buy a house, you know, I mean, this isn't something that's, you can really expect unless you're a plumber or something. I mean, where does that fall?
Well, ultimately, depending on how, when you do your purchase, usually there's a home inspection involved in it, that could certainly be added in. For example, I know of a family member of an employee here that recently bought a house, and part of their inspection was, I'll pay extra in that inspection, but I need the sewer line out to the road camered, to make sure it doesn't have impending failure coming. So, those aspects of it, but yeah.
I would have never known to inspect this until this situation was brought before us.
I wasn't here at the Alderman meeting that night, but I did listen to the recording creator. And I'm like, Corey, how would you know?
Right.
You know, and I guess the other question I had, I didn't look that address up for that individual that spoke that night, but I guess my question to the city would be, is that in the same area? Is it up north where you have to do, okay. I didn't know if it was where you had to do that flush out every once in a while.
Well, we have, right. That's just north of the river, but we have, but we do have regular flushing all over the city, and we started that process around 1981.
So, we have that individual.
Yeah, yeah, they're here.
So, I just was curious if that was something that...
When we started having regular maintenance issue, where we had to run the jetter, that's when we got the jetter truck, when we had to regularly do it because of the sewers being flat or whatever. Primarily up there, but there are other areas that we do it in, too. That's when this ordinance came in.
So, I guess my question would be, from a homeowner's standpoint, of not knowing if they have that backwater valve, where this happened? Is that infrastructure to such that we band-aided it?
And this is...
I'm just curious. I'm trying to figure out how something like this happens, and from the city's standpoint, was it something that we were aware of and we should have fixed from our side? Just the sewer lines themselves? So, I'm trying to get educated.
Sure. And here's what I can tell you, based upon the report that came to us, was that the homeowners indicated that they had heard we had jetted, we know we jetted in that general vicinity, earlier in the week or the week before, or something, I don't know for sure, and whether there was a separation in time of when they got back or whatever. I don't know the timing of it, but I do know that we had been up there, and fairly close to this area, we found the blockage in the line that we had to emergency dig up in the last six weeks. So, it's in that same vicinity, because there were low flows going on, so we were looking at it. Whether the jetting caused it, or whatever, I don't know.
So, you know, when it says all, let's go all the way back to 1981. It says, "All public sewers shall have the building, so constructed and bent back from the beginning." As a home builder, or someone, I don't want to say constructing for the first time, I don't know that that's on our list. Usually, it's the kitchen and the type of flooring we put in. So, who is really responsible for that?
Well, yeah, in this one, to be quite frank, I think that was a prospective application, that all the new building, well, it says all existing users must do it. I would suspect that the second version you see was written based to address that specific concern. The second version says that not only all new public sewers shall have it constructed, but all existing shall have it reconstructed to do that. So, it would address that issue.
It's really hard to debate something dated so far back.
Yeah, right.
At the same token, who's responsible for this? Is it the city inspector who should have contacted, is it the builder?
Well, it depends on how old the house is.
I've lived here since 48, when I was born. Let me say that, the house that I owned, when this ordinance was passed, there was a notification in the paper. I called Roy Coulter up the street, had come down to check my house. He said, "You have no backflow valve." For 300 bucks, he booked one in. The next summer, my next-door neighbor had his basement backed up with sewage, because he did not do it. But I did it because I saw the notification in the paper.
And, but ultimately, I think to answer your question...
Is this something like currently today, that your building is...
Absolutely, absolutely. Anytime somebody does a repair and pulls a permit, we require them to install one at that point in time. All new homes, since when I got here in 2007, there was nothing, no specific inspection associated with it. There were a couple of changes, and that was one of the things we added. Make sure this is in every new home, we have to make sure it's there. I don't, I can't tell you prior to 2007 whether we inspected for it specifically or not, or when we started, but I do know that many of them were getting it, some of them weren't. It became a function of quality of the inspections, you know. Prior to 2000, I can't tell you. I haven't seen any records prior to 2000.
When someone installs all of those, they need to like, pull permits and things like that, or the city...
We would prefer to have it inspected to avoid the scenario. Another one of Alderman Moore's neighbors installed one, and the top was not sealed, it was a coffee can in the concrete, so...
That's a lot of flood.
Yeah, so it didn't, it didn't, it's designed so that if there's a back pressure coming in, it won't come up through your basement. It won't even go, theoretically, if you don't have it and it's sealed, it's going to come, push up through your toilet or your lowest plumbing thing. But if you have that device installed properly, and this one was installed, they just didn't put the sealed lid on it, so it just blew right up through that hole. But ultimately, yeah, we inspect them, we've been inspecting them since 2008.
Has there been any technology, any history of this issue happening at that home before?
Not to my...
Have you got any insurance reports on the house, and where everybody?
Yeah, right.
So, going forward, it appears the best thing to do is simply an educational process on this for our residents, and it probably would be...